Academic Achievement Committee meeting to order. I'm sorry, you want me to start over? Good evening, the time is now five thirty-two and I would like to call the Academic Achievement Committee meeting to order. I am Dr. Zippur Miller, Chair of this committee and the District Five Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. We have guest panelists with us this evening. We have our board's chair, Dr. Judith Bill Mel- sorry, Dr. Juanita Miller. And um. Guest panelist, board member Judy McInnes Murray. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the Academic Achievement Committee members from the board, our guest panelists, the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff, then the Board Office Staff.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alvaro Stroh Rees. I'm the student member of the Board of Education and a member of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Mrs. McInnes Murray, you're on mute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy McInnes Murray. I'm a board member at large and pleased to be here with you this evening. Thank you.
This is Curtis Valentine, board member and committee member.
Good afternoon, this is Dr. Juanita Miller, Board Chair, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening.
Good evening, I am Judy White. I'm the Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Liz Faison. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Student Services.
Hello, Emily Pasco, one of the new mental health coordinators for Prince George's County. And this is Max.
And these Ellis, Administrative Secretary, Board Office.
Good evening, Joe Day Newsom, Director of the Board Office.
Thank you, everyone, and I thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Ellis, can you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening again, everyone. Dr. Zippur Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mr. Serone Ruiz.
Here.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
We have three committee members present. We have a room.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. The agenda is adopt. Thank you so much. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. There are no registrants for public comment this evening. So at this time, Dr. White, I will yield the floor to you and your colleagues from school support and leadership to present this evening's agenda item. Mental health and supports to students and staff.
Good evening, I have with me this evening, and I bring greetings on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Helen Coley, as her staff will present tonight. So I introduce to you, Dr. Elizabeth Faison and Emily Pasco to share with you the resources that we have, which are a lot as it relates to mental health and what we're doing this year for our students and our staff. So I'm, Dr. Faison, I turn it over to you. Dr. Faison, you're on mute.
That will be helpful if I unmute it. Good evening, everybody. It is an absolute pleasure to always talk about mental health services and it's a delight to come on behalf of Dr. Coley and our team. Just to give an overview of what we're up to as it relates to mental health services in Prince George's County Public Schools this year. And so our presentation tonight really frames how we have grown from last year, what services we're providing in addition to what we've done last year, and what are the additional programs that we have in place that we're looking to improve upon for this year. So it really is a presentation that frames our work and what we will endeavor to do this school year. And so last year, we presented on the fact that we have ten mental health providers. These providers were garnered garnered through a request for proposals. And we went through that process and there were ten organizations that were approved to provide contracted clinical staff to PGCPS schools. And so they are referenced here. This is our third year implementing this particular program and this model. And so this slide really shows the progression of how we began this work in twenty twenty through where we are right now in hopes of being fully staffed with a clinician in every single school by twenty-three, twenty-four. This year, we will have one hundred and sixty-seven clinicians in one hundred and sixty-eight schools. The difference is because our online campus shares a clinician with our CT REED school. And so that allowed us to provide additional services to all of the schools that we had in the next phase for this particular school year. All other schools have one full-time clinician that is allocated. I would say right now, currently, out of the one hundred and sixty-seven positions, we have twenty vacancies where our mental health providers are still feverishly recruiting so that we will realize a full capacity of staff in all of our intended one hundred and sixty-eight schools for this school year. And so as we began the program, we began with community schools first. And then we branched out from community schools from twenty twenty to where we are now, adding Bridge to Excellent Schools. All of our high schools will have a mental health clinician. All of our alternative schools, schools that were noted as having high chronic absenteeism rate, that is having a rate of students missing ten percent of their enrollment, whether it is for lawful or unlawful absence, it still constitutes a chronic absenteeism, as well as those schools who were noted as being disproportionately discipline rate. This year, we added elementary schools. We also added Legends Public Schools as a public charter school, as well as the online campus and CT REED. Next year, we look forward to adding the remaining thirty-six schools for a complement of two hundred and four schools. When we talk about mental health clinicians in our schools, the role that they play varies. There are six main constructs that make up the work that our clinicians are layering on in our schools. And so they do provide counseling services to students, not just to students, but also to their families, to their parents, and in in most instances, to staff as well when requested. Last year, we began providing a check-in session with every student who returned from an out-of-school suspension. And so our school counselors are a big part of that, and so are our mental health clinicians. Those check-ins are intended to have a conversation with every student coming back from an out-of-school suspension to really delve into the whys and to determine if there are additional supports that those students would need beyond academics. It could be counseling, social-emotional. It could be economic supports that the students may need as well as resources. And so in those instances, as a result of these check-in sessions with our counselors and clinicians, a student may be referred to our community school coordinator or may be referred for counseling or to the school counseling for academic supports. Additionally, our mental health clinicians are providing consultation to teachers as well as administrators around student behavior or student issues, and they're providing information on how to support students or what behaviors may look like, what may be appropriate strategies to work with students. Additionally, our mental health clinicians are observing students in classrooms, and a part of their work is not just in direct service to a student, but also their work that is contributed on behalf of the student. So many times, they may be asked to attend an IEP meeting or individual educational plan meeting, as well as a student intervention team meeting or five oh four meeting. And their expertise is valued in providing additional strategies that may be useful in supporting a student. Additionally, they provide training and professional development to our students, to our staff, and also to our parents. They also provide psychosocial evaluations as well as support to schools when we have a loss of a student or a staff member. So their crisis support is valuable as they join the team of school counselors and PPWs and psychologists who are providing this crisis support. Additionally, when there is a student who has presented with suicidal ideation, they also provide a risk assessment to determine the severity and the level of risk for those students. And so I'm going to turn this particular slide over to our brand-new mental health coordinator, Ms. Emily Pasco, and let her talk about her role as a mental health coordinator in our schools.
Thank you. Yes, I'm excited to to start this position. Been here for just about a month. I was previously a school psychologist for about six years before that. But the mental health coordinator roles are primarily overseeing the youth first care program and the mental health clinicians, so really working with them in getting acclimated to their school, answering questions that they may have about the services that they that they are providing and consulting them through PGCPS protocol as well. Also, leading the crisis response team, which, as Dr. Faison mentioned, is composed of school psychologists, counselors, mental health clinicians, and people personnel workers. And we assist administrators and school-based teams when they're when they've experienced the death of a staff member or a student. And the crisis team, just this week, we we went to a response today, and there's another one requested for tomorrow. So that is a big responsibility of the mental health coordinator. Leading the threat assessment team, so making sure that the administrative procedure that was put into place previously continues to be followed and adhered to and offering consultation if there's any questions about the protocols to take when there is a threat such as from a student or staff member. So leading the threat assessment team and establishing those guidelines and then supporting schools as they work through those. Speaking and managing mental health grant resources, we just finished up a grant proposal for Project Prevent, which is to prevent and respond to community violence. So we wrote in a couple of programs that we're really excited to hopefully implement in Prince George's County Public Schools in the next year for awarded that that grant money. And also in the early stages of completing another grant proposal to recruit and retain school counselors and school psychologists. So rolling out calm spaces in school, I think that was the project of Mr. Scott Showalter. Really, he's worked really hard to establish guidelines for calm spaces in classrooms and at home. So giving suggestions on items that can be in calm spaces for students when they're in a crisis or when they're escalated so that they can have a place to go to and things to access resources like fidget items, affirmations, things like that, journals, so that they can work through their big emotions before they're available for learning or in the home. So a really comprehensive guidebook on that. And so the sources of strength effort is to prevent suicide. It's a program that trains trained school-based staff in addition to high school-age students and middle school-age students on suicide prevention and having those difficult conversations to prevent suicide. Also representative of Prince George's County Public Schools and trying to help brand the messaging of services. So making sure that the mental health website is up to date on all the resources that we have available to students and communicating with parents to make sure that they know what's available. And also just rolled out this new mentalhealth@pgcps.org email address so that any families who are not sure how to access supports or or aren't sure who the school-based contact would be or any community resources, we're going to monitor that to make sure that that everybody who is seeking mental health services gets gets the assistance that they need and gets support from Prince George's County Public Schools. And then, as I mentioned, the website as well.
Thank you, Emily. One of the things I wanted to note more than anything is that we have non-clinical counseling supports that have always been available in our schools. And so while we have clinical support in one hundred and sixty-eight schools when we are fully staffed this year, I think it's important for everyone to know that schools that do not have a mental health clinician still have the resources and support of our school counselors, as well as our school psychologists. And I've just noted a few of the things that school counselors do, as well as school psychologists that support students around counseling, but counseling as well as academic, their social-emotional learning, as well as doing initial and reassessments, the evaluations that they're doing. Emily mentioned threat assessments, the behavior threat assessments are often indicators of students who really are in need of additional mental health supports. And also, you know, providing those observations and consultations to staff when they really need to know how to support a student appropriately. What I wanted to note about school counselors is the the main thing that their work is intended to do, whether it's counseling or college and career readiness or academic support, even their classroom guidance. It really is intended to help a student become college and career-ready and to graduate. And so that's our end game. So everything that we do as it relates to student services by way of our mental health clinicians, our school counselors and our psychologists are really to help remove those barriers, provide support, and address the needs that they have that get in the way of students being able to graduate. The last thing I wanted to note is that we also provide evening counseling centers. So right now, in our students' write some responsibilities handbook, it is written that when students come to school inebriated or in possession of alcohol, drugs, or tobacco products, that those students are to attend a drug treatment counseling. And so through our Title IV grant, we've been able to provide parents with a free option in being able to do that. And so right now, we have three locations that evening counseling is occurring in our physical sites in PGCPS. Parkdale High School is one, Largo High School is another, and Oxon Hill Staff Development Center. That is where we see students and and their parents escorted by their parents come into a site, one of those sites one day a week, to receive drug counseling. The training that our counselors are received, who are delivering this type of service delivery to students, was provided by the University of Maryland. We call it the expert model or the the short and brief intervention structure that our counselors receive in order to provide this type of counseling to students. And so that's something that I wanted to note, and that's available to students in grades five through twelve. Those, again, who have caught with the infraction of either had ingested tobacco, tobacco, alcohol, or other drugs, as well as in possession of. So we're providing them with this opportunity for counseling on-site in the evening in a way that it does not impact their instructional time. And so this year, Prince George's County Public Schools has partnered with our Prince George's County Health Department. Through this partnership, we have worked to roll out Hazel Telehealth this year. It actually rolled out this week, and so Hazel, I'm sorry, rolled out last week. We launched it last week, and sixty-three of our schools, there are two models that our students will be able to access this resource, Hazel at Home. And that is for elementary through high school. All of our students will be able to access those services with parental consent in the afternoon in the safety of their homes electronically. Additionally, there are three sixty-three schools that will receive both medical and mental health supports while at school. It is our academies, our middle schools, as well as our high schools. And so Hazel is a web-enabled device where our providers provide support from seven in the morning through seven PM, Monday through Friday. It is, again, for our pre-K eight academies, middle schools, as well as high schools, and that's where we are beginning. We may expand, but right now, we're starting where we can monitor, we can implement efficiently, and then evaluate and be able to monitor the data to show the use of Hazel. Right now, our medical model has rolled out first. Our mental health model will roll out in a few weeks. One thing I wanted to talk about was our data collection system. Last year, in the spring, we launched BH Works. BH Works was our electronic database. It allowed us to our clinicians to enter data around the students that they saw, whether it's an individual counseling session or an observation or professional development, they were able to enter this information into BH Works. And so since we've launched BH Works, there have been a number of enhancements to the program. We saw that certain functions could be improved upon for the sake of our clinicians not spending most of their time in data collection and documentation, which is important, but spending most of their time in direct services to students. And so now BH Works interfaces with SchoolMax, and it updates every night every new student that is enrolled in PGCPS. What this allows our clinicians to do is to be able to enter a student's name, and their ID pops up, their location, and they're able to select the student that they are currently seeing, and then begin to enter the notes versus trying to find the student identification number and then populating the information. It is now pre-populated because there is an integration between BH Works and SchoolMax. And so we're really, really excited about this. Our clinicians are excited, as well as our service providers feel that this is a real improvement. And and it also allows for more time on task versus time documenting the work. Additionally, our clinicians and our community school coordinators have been trained in BH Works, as well as they have received access. They all now have accounts to BH Works. We had several sessions to ensure all of our returning clinicians, new clinicians, as well as our community school coordinators had access to this platform. What's critical about our community school coordinators having access is that they're able to refer a student to mental health services through our BH Works platform. And that is the method that we had received referrals previously, but it had been done through a different type of platform. Now we're able to track referrals as well as the kinds of services that are being delivered. We're also able to pull a report on the spot to see how many students have been referred, how many counseling sessions have been held, and we can monitor and work with our service providers if we have a question around a student receiving a service. Additionally, we do have consent forms. A mental health counseling through our licensed clinicians require parental consent. And we now have that parental form, that consent form translated from English into Spanish and into French. Where we want to go with BH Works and the reason we chose this particular data entry system was because it offered the availability of us launching screening tools for students. So in BH Works right now are housed tools to screen students for trauma, for depression, for anxiety, as well as the other topics that you see. The the purpose for the screening really is for identification as to who needs supports and what type of supports do they need. And so as an embellishment this year, we really are looking to determine really early what types of screeners will we utilize and will we do a universal screener by grade level, or will we solely do utilize the screening tools for individual students as seen? But we would like to be able to see the progress that students are may have made as a result of the counseling services that they are receiving. So this is a goal, and this is where we're headed with the tool, beyond just collecting the services that are delivered to our students. And so we know, you know, the services are only as good as the people who know them and the people who utilize them. So our messaging and our branding, having a plan around that is also a goal. Emily referenced the website that we have. Most recently, we worked with our Instructional Technology Department to create a mental health email account. Last week, we also let students know that we had this email account during our pre-PE Grass General Assembly. We informed students that we now had a place where if they had a question or their parents had a question, they could they could email the mental health address if they couldn't get those questions answered in the school. That's what we would rather have, is that communication and building that partnership between parents and students and mental health professionals in the building. But if they have a question beyond that, we have a place for them to send that information to. Ms. Pasco has written a letter that will go out to every parent. It is now being reviewed so that we can have it translated again into French and Spanish so that all of our parents will know we have mental health supports, what schools we have the clinicians in. We'll talk about how they can refer their children, what services are being provided, and then the mental health services email address that they can email us for questions. Additionally, what we did last year was we changed the way service learning hours were earned for students in the past. In the past, students could only learn earn service learning hours in the evening and after school. And so we worked with the Maryland State Department of Ed, who allows us now to, our students, to earn those hours during the day. We created a Project Twenty-Four plan that gave students a way for them to launch mental health civically-driven projects in order to earn their service learning credits. And so we really want our students to become more astute in what mental health symptoms are and how to be help-seeking, and certainly hear their voice around mental health services and what they believe are necessary in our schools. And so we provided a plan for them to earn twenty-four credits through the different activities that would each have associated. through the different activities that would each have associated hours. So that's just another way that we're trying to message and really infuse mental health and integrate it beyond just an external service that is now in the building. So lastly, I'll just talk about the logo. We wish for the branding, which is one of our strategic goals, that we are branding and we are creating access so that when students see the logo, they know what the logo is, just like the golden arches. They know that's McDonald's. We want to do the very same thing with mental health services and also remove stigma. I think that remains our underlying work for us to help remove the stigma and help students to become more comfortable seeking mental health services and supports that they need. And so the last couple of things I just wanted to talk about is most recently, we've received information from the Maryland State Department of Education regarding the suicide and crisis lifeline now just being solely nine-eight-eight. And so not only with our website and our logo and our email address and our letter to parents, we also want to have signage and visuals for our students in school so that they can quickly access the help they need. I like Q R codes. So I think at some point we'll have a Q, a poster with a Q R code where students can refer themselves or where they can access some of the resources that we see here. But the goal really is, is bringing the message closer to the students that we want to access the services. And so what underpins this work around mental health clinicians in our schools are a couple of funding sources. Our state supplemental grant we received two years ago. It allows us to provide counseling services to students over the summer. And so this, the, this past summer, we were able to do that in a greater way than built on what we were able to do the previous summer. We will have this grant for two additional summers that will allow our clinicians to work in summer school as well as provide continued mental health supports and counseling to students who are on their caseload during the school year. So they're able to keep in contact with them over the summer and that is funded through the state supplemental grant. Additionally, the ESER Grant and Community Schools funds our clinicians' placement in schools during the school year and during the day. Those two pots of money are the ways that we fund the one hundred and sixty-eight schools that will have a mental health clinician this year. Additionally, we have what we call a BRIC Grant. Prince George's County Public School was the only L E A who received a grant from the U S Department of Ed three years ago. It is a demonstration grant that allows us to partner with the University of Maryland and with Bowie to place their interns in our schools. Our school counselors serve as a site supervisor of these interns. And our counselors go through a mental health course by the University of Maryland as does the interns. They also must be a member of the American School Counseling Association, of the Maryland School Counseling Association, and attend learning opportunities through the conference. Additionally, that grant also pays for our mental health symposium. Most recently, it allowed us to fund our first Parent Wellness Wednesday Session that we held regarding bullying. And we have two more years on that particular grant before it sunsets. And then we have Title Four. Title Four is that grant that we have been able to fund our social emotional learning platforms. It also funds our evening counseling centers as well as some counselors who work over the summer to provide academic supports to our students. And so I talked a little about our Title Four Grant being able to fund our Quaver S E L or our S E L platform. So we rolled out last year Quaver S E L. We had Sanford Harmony before that. And then we added on Safe Schools videos for students that also had social emotional components. We've had Naviance for middle schools. This year, as an additional layer, especially not just social emotional learning, but bullying prevention, we will have second step in our middle schools. We have written this into our Title Four Grant as a part of our bullying expansion plan that we wrote last year. And so when we talk about the mental health supports to students, what is critical around that is their learning opportunities, but also for staff to bring them along in their learning and understanding how to support students in the classroom, to build their empathy and the, and students, help students learn positive relationships, develop positive relationships, how to self, be self-aware, how to self-manage, regulate their behaviors. And so our Office of Professional Learning and Leadership has partnered with Student Services, and this is funded through our ESER Grant Funds, where we now have a social emotional learning institute. This institute will begin October the twenty-ninth. And it was developed in partnership with Mount Holyoke College and the National Network of State Teachers of the Year. At the end of the day, what we hope to have is one hundred certified educators in social emotional learning. They will also earn three graduate credits at the end of the session. Right now, we have seventy educators who attended the interest meeting who have applied and been accepted into the institute. At the end of the institute, they will be certified and sell and then begin to train other educators around PGCPS. And so this is what we're doing to systematically support our teachers and supporting our students around social emotional learning that also supports our mental health for students. And so lastly, I just wanted to note that each year we create and update this tool that shows where our training and education for students, for staff, and for our parents, what we have secured and developed for them as well as our counseling supports and then additional resources. And what we now have to add to this is our mental health email address for our parents. And so when you click the link, you'll see the three different components for our students, for our staff members, as well as for our staff. And so this really is a living, breathing document. We always hope to have additional partnerships with our community agencies and hope that we continue to grow in that based on what the data shows us and what our students need. And so I will stop. That concludes just a general overview of what we have in play for this school year. And I see Dr. Miller's hand.
Thank you so much. Now I will open up the floor for discussion. I see. I think I was on mute. Thank you so much. I will open up the floor for discussion. So I see Dr. Juanita Miller's hand up. So we'll start with her.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Dr. Sappora. This was just, this was an absolutely fantastic, oh, I mean, very well put-together, coordinated presentation, and I'm very pleased. I'm so pleased that I'm scared to ask my questions, but I just, you know, my background being special ed, that always comes to mind. And it's not particularly a special ed question, but when we talk about mental health and the supports that you have, you said you have a hundred and sixty-eight clinicians. Will these clinicians be shared with the special ed programs? And I'm, I'm just thinking of the, the time, you know, the requirements that I E Ps have for certain clinicians, especially in the E D programs, E D and autistic programs. You don't have to answer it now. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but these are the, you know, things that came to mind as you presented. I wanted to also get the qualifications that we are looking for in the clinicians. Are we looking for all certified psychologists, social workers with M S Ws, and counselors with degree, with a background in social emotional counseling? I think you addressed that at one point with the counselors when you broke it down, but I'm just reading from my notes. So, you know, we can come back, but I just wanted to present that. And it was something else. Oh, the data management. I wanted to know, a parent contact called, well, sent an email wanting to know who was certified to, who was certified to determine the students having vaccinations because there was no nurse on duty at the school. But my research revealed that the data is sent to this, to the head, the super director of nursing. So is this the same database that all of that information will be going into? Or this is separate and apart? Okay, well, I, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but I, I'm telling you, this was absolutely an outstanding presentation. Our school system is very fortunate and I believe we could be the role model for other jurisdictions that we have in the past with other situations that have come across. Thank you all for your time.
If, if I could just answer your question because around sharing these resources with special education, we actually had a meeting last week with the Associate Superintendent of Special Education around mental health supports for students. And so our school counselors right now, as well as our psychologists, can provide counseling to students who have counseling as a related service that's written on their I E P. Additionally, our mental health clinicians can see students who have an I E P. And though we have written an initial guidance around what that looks like, we found some areas that require some further clarification. And so our meeting last week began to do that work and will continue. We have a meeting to, a time to meet again to really further home that out. But yes, we are sharing this resources. A student with an I E P can see a mental health clinician. They can see our school counselors and they also can see our psychologists. As far as credentials are concerned, our mental health clinicians must be licensed by the state. They must be a licensed clinical professional counselor or they can be a licensed social worker, but they must be licensed by the state. Our school counselors must have a master's if they're providing counseling to students in schools. They must have a master's as well as be certified by the Maryland State Department of Education to do so. And that is the same thing for our school psychologists. They must all have masters and be certified by the Maryland State Department of Ed to do so.
One last thing, Dr. Sappora. I just, on behalf of the board, I'd like to extend to Dr. Coley condolences on the loss of her family member. So I just found that out, so I just wanted that to be known by this committee since she is a part of this, your, your team. Thank you.
We'll let her, we'll, we'll pass that on to her.
Thank you. I'm through.
Thank you. Board member Saran Ruiz.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Faison, Ms. Pascoe, for the presentation. It sounded a little sniffle, so bear with me, guys. But firstly, I want to say it was great to have Dr. Faison at the P E Grass General Assembly. Afterwards, I was able to speak with some of the students and they said they absolutely did learn. And I think one of the best ways was when you were doing the call-out. If, you know, sharing the facts was asking students themselves if they actually knew, you know, that was a resource PGCPS offered. And a lot of them, if not all them, walked out burning something new that the school system offered. So I thought that was really great. So one of my first things, I'm not sure if we have this. I was just really curious in terms of the check-ins after disciplinary action. If you have like any data in terms of, you know, if they're actually like helping prevent future issues, if we have that type of data, I'm not sure if you have that.
That's one of our metrics that we're looking to monitor. So we're putting that in place right now. Every time a student does have a check-in, we have developed a Google sheet for our clinicians to utilize as they go through this Google form. This lists the questions that every school counselor and every clinician should ask every student that they're seeing. It is a uniform process. And once they complete that information, it dumps into a spreadsheet that is shared with the principal at that school, the clinician, the, and the counselor at that school. And so it is housed right now at the school-based level. So we're generating a way, how can we gather that data for the entire district? Right now, schools have access to all of the sessions that have been held through that Google form that dumps into that database.
Okay. And then my last question was regarding the, I guess, to hear more about what are the efforts to reach the two hundred four by next year? So kind of like what the hopes are, what the plan is to recruit the mental health clinicians to reach that?
Thank you. It's a really great question. We held our monthly meeting with all of the mental health providers last week. And we talked about, number one, every week, mental health providers are to complete the vacancy report. And Dr. Ingrid, I have to give her a shout out. She is the Director of Community Schools. She and I, as well as Doreen Hogan, Supervisor of Counseling, now Emily, and Department of Social Services, Mr. Derek Flake now, is serving. And we meet every Tuesday, especially when we have hot items. And if we don't have hot items, we may not meet that Tuesday. But we are the steering committee that meets every Tuesday that informs our timelines around how we're doing, what we need to do to follow up on the provider meeting that we have monthly. So we had a provider meeting last month, la- last week, actually. And what we discussed with our mental health providers is the need to have every single vacancy filled. We also gave a deadline as to when we needed that to occur. But we also engaged them in conversation to hear what they were experiencing as a barrier to filling the positions that they have. And what they did share with us is that there is quite a competitive process amongst all of the mental health providers trying to be that agency that clinicians want to work for. What we have learned is that there's been a big shift and we had been informed of this from our graduate programs that there are less students coming through graduate programs as a result of COVID. There's been a decline even in the number of mental health clinicians who have enrolled in graduate programs. That's the first thing. Number two is that there has been a shift in the location that clinicians want to and can work. And so during the pandemic, telehealth and lots of organizations that hire virtual clinicians really grew. They grew, they blew up, as, as students can say. And so clinicians now have lots of options as to where they want to work. And if they do not want to leave their home, they can work for a company and counsel their clients all day in sweatpants and T-shirts if they'd like, but in the comfort of their home and not have to leave and come out to a school. And so these are some of the things that we compete with. Additionally, providers talked about the amount of money that they have spent recruiting clinicians and the fact that they're amongst the ten, they're recruiting sometimes amongst one another. So some agencies are able to pay a little more, some have a little more benefits. And so clinicians just, it, it, it is now an opportunity for them to shop around and make some demands. And these are the kind of And these are the kind of instances that we are dealing with in trying to fill the seats. However, there are a few who do it well. And so what Dr. Ingrid and I have begun to do is reassign those schools where an agency may have four or five vacancies. We've begun to reassign those schools to providers who can staff. That is never what we would want to resort to do. But in the, with our goal and priority in mind of having resources in front of students, we began that process last week. And we will continue to do so until students have the resources that they need in all one sixty-eight schools.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Thank you. With Chair Juanita Miller, did you have another question?
Yes, is it okay?
Sure.
Dr. Faison, did I understand you said that you all are setting up a mental health number for parents to call?
Right now, it's an email address. If we, we do now have an, an, an office or a space that we call Mental Health Supports. And that is the office that Emily now works in, and we do have an administrative assistant there. So if a parent does call the office number, she will receive, or she will receive the support of Ms. Emily Pasco at this moment, but we've set up an email address for parents to utilize, which is what we share with students. The other numbers that we have are basically national and local crisis and suicide intervention hotlines that we make available to our students.
Okay, thank you. My hand goes down now.
Thank you. Board Member Valentine?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation. It's ironic, I was talking about this very topic with my students at my class. I just finished teaching. And one of the conversations came up about this strategic plan. We pulled it up in front of the class. And we, they were, they were, my students were pleasantly surprised with the number of references to student care, wellness, staff care, and the like. And so one of the questions we had was around, you know, student, student support and whether limiting it to students who self-select is, is an issue. I guess my question is, is there, is there a model or is there an opportunity or is there a vision that will get to a point where we won't have to wait for students to have to signal the need for support and that it becomes more universal in different ways, and it's not necessarily called mental health services or therapy, but something else. I don't know what that is. But just what are your thoughts on how we make this universal, how we get rid of the stigma, stigma, but also how we don't wait for folks to have to self-select or signify the need to help and give and assume everyone does need help, if that makes sense?
I, I really, I, I can appreciate the question, and I'll say a couple of things to that. So right now, students can self-select for counseling. Their parents can also refer them. Or a teacher can say to the clinician or the community school coordinator, you know, I have a student in my class that I think needs support. I'd like to refer. And so the clinician will then reach out to the student and the parent. So there are a number of ways right now that a student can be referred for services beyond just being selected for, self-selecting for counseling. The other part of what you asked is, we call it the Youth Care First Program. And that is our name for mental health services. So when we're talking about this whole entire mental health program, we call it our Youth First Care Program. And that is what our branding will be around, our logo will be around. But when they see that logo, it really will signify the mental health supports, which we call the Youth Care First Program. Around the universal piece, you know, we talked about using the screeners. And will we, you know, what do we think will be best around perhaps screening all ninth graders or screening all sixth, sixth graders? And doing this screening so that it is a universal process. And then the other part to that is, we know that the stigma is real. And a part that serves as a barrier to all the students who could access services actually doing so is getting consent from a parent. And so because consent is required, there are some students who may want services who will require a consent from a parent who may not get it readily without us coaxing the parents along that it's okay to receive these types of services. For some parents, as you know, just by the virtue of the fact that you're having the conversation, you know, for some parents, there is fear around and misinformation around utilizing a clinician or a therapy. Those words can be very daunting. And it, and it may signify that there's something wrong with my child, you know, and parents that's sometimes hard for parents to hear. And some, and sometimes it doesn't have to be that at all. It just may mean the student needs to talk to someone, a process with someone, or receive support for stress or academic. It can be a student who is an absolute A student who deal with perfectionism, down to students who are failing and doing miserably. So then the, the gamut of students that we want to serve is, is from kids who are college-bound, you know, to students who are undecided or maybe on a different route. And so we, we have a lot of work to do around just removing the stigma and having people, as you say, become more comfortable utilizing these services. And sometimes it's just not as deep as people want to think of it, you know? It, it really is about wellness in a way that our bodies are about the medical and physical wellness. It's about maintaining our mental wellness. So I, I can appreciate the comment, and I hope I answered your question.
Well, thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. I just think that even though, I mean, I think we're, we're, we're very progressive and attacking this issue, but I'm just curious about whether there are other, you know, experimental efforts, you know, even my, in my class, I was talking to students about, you know, having a half a day every other Friday or something where students are given opportunities to do things like yoga, journaling, other things that are probably more preventative. It may be, we have a couple of schools that is experiment with it. It just where there's experimentation and innovation outside of just sort of the traditional thing. I mean, everything I think we were doing is in our direction. But what else is there out there? Just, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much. I, I, I would say I echo the sentiments in terms of this presentation. Very comprehensive, and it's really great to see the depth of services that are available in terms of wraparound services for children because, you know, as you look at the child, particularly when they came back from COVID, but even before that, many times you would grapple over a child coming back from a suspension and then, you know, the, the, how to, you know, work with or deal with the issue with the student. So it was exciting to hear that there is that standard practice of now that they meet with the clinician as well as with the school staff so that they can identify the root cause and hopefully address it. So what I'm curious about is, as you started this practice, have you started to see a decline? And if not, you know, I know you just started to collect the data. But I'm just curious about whether there's been a decline on students who are coming back and not going back for the same offense. Because, you know, now that you have that wraparound service to really identify with, what the root cause is. And you don't have to answer it now because I know that, you know, you talked about how you're really starting to collect the data, but it's something I'm just curious about. The other question is on a different, when you talked about where you are funding, I noticed that the funding sources are all grants, right? So you know where I'm going with this, right? So then the grant runs out because I'm like, I was so excited to see, okay, we had one sixty-eight, we're gonna get to two oh four. Every school's gonna have a clinician. And then when I said, okay, it's a grant, so do you know when, like, for example, you have the state supplemental, the Essar, Essar, the BRIC, Title Four I know is a federal grant. So do you have an idea of the timelines for this grant? And I ask this question because then as board members, we probably need to sit together and think about what are implications for the budget as we start thinking about continuing the services?
I got muted again. Okay. So I bring this up because this was a slide developed by our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Hurstman, and this was done a year or so ago. It has been updated to reflect our current numbers. But the system really has thought about a plan for sustainability. What will we do? And how we, how will we maintain these supports in schools once the grants have sunset and the money has run out? And so as you can see where we started with Kirwin funding, and then we had the, the Maryland Center for School Grant. And then we had the Esser Grants. And so as you can see, that next year will be our very last year for Esser Grant Funding. So the system has already charted a course wherein we will have one hundred and twenty-six schools approximately by fiscal year twenty-five that are on Kirwin. Those will be our anticipated community schools. And then the other schools that are not community schools will be funded by PG CPS. So we thought and taken into account the need to continue these services beyond grant funding. We continue to seek grant funding to support when Esser runs out. In the event that that is not available, then our system will pick up the cost for our schools to our non-community schools to maintain them in our health conditions.
Thank you. Any other questions? I was practicing my wait time, but it looks like there are no other questions. Just wanted to make sure. I want to thank you so much for this great presentation and the discussion that followed. And just put out there, if there's anything that we can do to support these efforts, please keep in touch and let us know what we can do. I did omit to say earlier that we had no registered public comment speakers, so I'm going to say it right now. We had no registered public comment speakers this evening, so it's on record for the evening. So let's go to item four point O, which is follow-up and next steps. So the follow-up items from the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two committee meeting are posted on board dots. So at this time, I really would like to thank Dr. White, Dr. Faison, Ms. Emily Pasco, and your entire team for this wealth of information that you shared with us. And for joining us this evening. I do want to add, if there are things that we need to start, as you talked about the stigma, for us to go out to our communities and do some outreach and just talk about the programs that are available, please reach out so that we can do that. Because this is important for parents to know that it's available for their students. So last but not least, I'd like to thank everybody for a great meeting. And so can, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I'd like to say this meeting is adjourned, and thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.